Call the meeting to order, please join me with flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So can I have a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
The second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Public comment on non-agenda items, and I think these are all, these are all agenda items, so we will, these are all about four B's, so we will talk about those then. So we'll go to four A, approval of the contract with the Costa Group for our superintendent search. So are we just voting on this, Tony, or is there any discussion?
There doesn't need to be any discussion, but there doesn't need to be any discussion, but that's truly up to you and the trustees. Dr. Gladstone is here, one of the search partners.
Okay. So, welcome, thanks for coming. So may I have a motion, if there's no questions or discussion, to approve the contract with the Costa Group for our superintendent search?
I'll move.
Make a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. I believe we have a meeting set up coming.
We have a meeting set up for Tuesday, March 5th, next Tuesday.
Okay.
From tonight, six o'clock in this room, to work with the consultants on beginning the search process.
Okay, great, yeah, come on up, say a few words, since you drove here in the storm.
Just to prepare you for next Tuesday night, we'll be meeting here at six, and what we want to do at that time is, number one, provide you with an overview of the process and the dates for the various elements of that process, and ask you to, any suggested changes, we want to emphasize again, it's your process, this is yours, we want you to own it, because you're going to own the final result, your new superintendent. So we want you to feel comfortable with the, that whole process. So we'll ask you to, at the end of that discussion, to approve whatever process we all agree to, then we'll ask you to do some brainstorming. We want you to tell us, and think about this over the weekend, what are the really positive things about your school district and your community? And then we want to ask you to brainstorm what you see as some of the concerns, some of the issues that you feel the next superintendent will be facing and should be aware of in this school district, and then we're going to ask you to define what you would like to see, what kind of characteristics, what kind of values, what kind of experience you'd like to see in your new superintendent. Following that brainstorming session, which usually lasts about an hour, we'll ask you to identify for us those people and those groups you'd like us to meet with, and we'll then, working with your staff, organize meetings, either individual meetings or small group meetings, and meet with people to go through that same process where we'll ask them to identify the concerns, identify the positives about your school district, the issues and concerns, and then what they'd like to see in a new superintendent. We'll compile all that and provide it to you, and then in a, one of the dates that we'll determine, we'll come back to you and ask you to review all of that information. So those are the things we'll be doing next Tuesday evening, so I'm looking forward to that meeting, any questions about that?
Yeah, we had talked about a town meeting, so we'll work that out next Tuesday?
Yes.
On how we're going to do that?
Yes.
Because, you know, what we talked about and what you're describing come close, but I think we want to, we want to, you know, have the structure, so we'll agree upon that on Tuesday and work that out.
Absolutely, okay, that's the purpose of the evening.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll swim home now.
Okay, drive careful. Okay, four B, discussion on facilities, I have three cards for input discussion, so I'll call you, you can come up and address us, so first, Dia Jenkins. Hi, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Dia Jenkins, and I'm the parent of two tech students, one junior and one freshly graduated, who is a freshman at UC Santa Barbara studying computer engineering. And I just wanted to point out a couple things about the facilities at Tech Middle that Tech High would be using. It would be serving, as you know, about 700 students between Tech Middle and Tech High and the community at large, so it serves a large portion of the CRPUSD student body and the community. About forty percent of the 320 students at Tech are inter-district transfers, so not only does it serve local kids, it attracts students from outside the district, so it does bring money into the district. Speaking of that forty percent, one of the out-of-district moms asked me to read a statement for her, because she was unable to show up, so I'm speaking on behalf of myself and this mom, and this is what she sent me to say. Hello, my name is Melissa Inhouse, I'm a Tech High parent of a sophomore and a junior. It's my understanding that CRPUSD is discussing facilities for the district at this evening's meetings. I am unable to attend due to a family emergency, but wanted to be heard. It's my understanding as well that the athletic facilities for Tech High and Tech Middle may be pushed down the list of priorities. Both of my kids, Melissa's of course, are motivated, highly performing students. Both are student athletes, one's on girls volleyball and the other's in boys soccer. They're residents of Windsor and make the commute into Ronert Park School District daily. We do that because we can enjoy the benefits of a rigorous STEAM education, a smaller school size, and participating in school athletics. However, Tech High's lack of facilities has made participating cumbersome. For example, on volleyball practice days, Melissa leaves work early to drive into Ronert Park, pick up her daughter, drive her off campus practice, and kills time in Ronert Park until practice is over. They have very much been looking forward to the new campus, as the kids will have easiest, easier access to school sports facilities, and Melissa won't have to leave work early and waste time. She reiterates forty percent of students at Tech High come from outside of CRPUSD. As a parent of two of those students, she brings outside dollars to the district, as well as excellent student athletes. I have no doubt that a lack of support for the athletic facilities at Tech Middle would affect our decision to make the commitment to CRPUSD if we had to do it again. I believe that Tech offers the best public school academic choice for families looking for a STEAM program. I hope that the board recognizes this as well. For the sake of the students and those in the pipeline, support the athletic facilities at Tech Middle, make it a priority. I, along with other out-of-district families, may not vote in the CRPUSD school board elections, but we are certainly voting with our time and our dollars. Please do not disenfranchise the STEAM kids at Tech High and Tech Middle. STEAM careers are a very large and growing part of job demand, and these kids also need good sports programs. As stewards of the school district, it is your responsibility to see all the students are served. It should be a very high priority. Thank you, Melissa Inhouse.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Warden, a current senior at Technology High School. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for being here, and especially the girls behind me representing the Tech High varsity girls soccer team. For four years, we have played varsity level soccer and have substantially made a difference at our school. Eight of us went from a 500 season balancing between wins and losses our freshman year to winning an NCS championship and getting first in our league the past season. We have devoted four years to a sport that we all love, not just because we enjoy it, but because we have pride in the name on the front of our jerseys. We understand there's been controversy over the facilities for the future of the sports program at our school. Sports to many are part of what develop and nurture school pride, which enhances the school spirit at all, or for all. A combination of sports and academics add desirable diversity to the campus by attracting students who value them from students within and outside of our district. We want diversity at our school, we don't want to turn away students due to a lack of resources to promote their interest. This past season, girls and boys varsity soccer played behind Richard Crane for the duration of our seasons. Although we had come to call Richard Crane as our home field, there are many disadvantages to this reality. Safety tops our list of concerns. Despite the tireless effort and countless hours that parent volunteers spent filling holes with dirt, one of our strongest offenders is still recovering from ACL surgery directly due to twisting her leg in a hole during a game. She was unable to complete and take part in the joy of competing for the NCS title. The sole reason for our occupation of the Richard Crane Field was the impression that the Tech Middle School Field was being reconstructed, which it wasn't. Regardless, more than forty people were playing on an inadequate, dangerous field. We need to invest in a maintainable facility that will last, not leave us guessing where we'll be playing next year. Twelve percent of Tech High students participated on the soccer teams. However, soccer isn't the only sport that benefits from this change. Nine percent of Tech High students participate in track, and roughly 9.5 percent of the population participates in baseball or softball. With this being said, over thirty percent of our students will directly benefit from this. However, it's not just the athletes that will gain from this change, our supporters will as well. Sports games, meets, and matches inspire pride in one school, but when there is no place for spectators to support the team, or a limited space to do so, support at games and matches decreases. There simply isn't room for fans. Without the infrastructure to sell food items and school spirit wear, our fundraising efforts become increasingly difficult. In the past, the track team trained at the SSU track, but stopped due to safety hazards. They now train at Rancho Cattati High School, which will be much more difficult to do next year due to the logistics from our new site. Our record-breaking track team has an opportunity to obtain their own track, a track where they can train relentlessly, proving their dominance as a team. As for baseball and softball, the softball team was utilizing a field that was most commonly used by Cal Ripken, the local youth baseball league. Two years ago, the softball team was second in the league with multiple players landing on all league teams. Baseball is growing every year with more interest in this activity, as well as for softball. It is our goal to provide students with access to what they want to pursue. Better equipment allows us to cater more effectively to the student body and prospective students and parents looking to become part of the Titan community. Understanding that the field project is not completely approved yet, it can't be far from ready. The way we, as students, see it, renovating the MU at Evergreen Elementary School serves around 300 students. Renovating the shared fields complex for Tech Middle and Tech High School not only serves around 800 combined students, but also serves at least another 1,000 between all the local residents that exercise every day at those fields and the teams that rent the baseball, soccer, and softball fields. I would think that in this case, taking into consideration, the community should be included in our priority. Team sports create a unity among students which is unique to every individual. Shared successes and failures on the soccer field, on the baseball diamond, on the track, and in the classroom are what define our school. With adequate sports facilities, sports teams can rely on the safety of their playing environment, resulting in more success in their seasons. This will improve the reputation of Tech High, the magnet STEM school, which can inspire more sports participation among Tech High students, and continue to attract students from both within and outside of our district. After today, I hope you all realize the significance of this facility and the difference it will make at Tech High. My time as an athlete here is almost up, so I'm not here for me, I'm here for the future of our sports program that I was fortunate enough to be a part of. I'm here for my brother in seventh grade, who hopes to attend this school and also be a part of the sports program. I'm here for the student athletes, coaches, fans, and supporters who spent countless hours devoted to this school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The last speaker, I'm having a hard time reading your handwriting, it looks like my handwriting. Is it Ian?
Ivan.
Ivan, okay, Ivan Kashami, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ivan Kashami, I am a sophomore at Technology High School, and I am on the tennis team. I would like to speak about our athletic program and how it helps our students and their relation to our school and our school spirit and our standing in the community. I myself, like everyone at Tech High, was once a middle school student, and in coming to Tech High, one of the things that drew away many of my friends who were academically inclined like myself was the lack of a proper sports program and the lack of proper fields. And now I have done two rounds of tours in my freshman year and my sophomore year as part of our associate student body, and one of the questions many of the middle schools have asked us is, what about athletics, what about sports? I want to play sports, but I can't. And many students, including myself, I'm from Petaluma, I'm not from the district, we can't commute easily between sports fields, school, and different events that we have to go to, and oftentimes, sport practices are timed differently in the day, so we end up wasting time in Ronert Park and not being able to do our homework. And I would just like to mention that sports are a big part of academics. You need mind, body, and spirit to have a full, well-rounded human being. Tech High is great with the mind and the spirit, but in the body part, we lack proper sports facilities, and we need to make up for that, and this is our chance. By renovating these fields, we can get a chance to provide a world-class education that cannot be found anywhere else in Sonoma County, and I will dare say, the entire state. So I implore you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, to consider this, and consider Tech High's status and increasing our enrollment and our appeal to students in middle school currently, by increasing our academic and sports capabilities and renovating our fields. Thank you very much.
Okay, so the tag team, Robert?
It's a tag team.
Tony and Josh, who goes first?
Well, I'll just quickly introduce, we're here this evening, excuse me, we're here this evening, and thank you for all of our, those of the community who are here as well. A special board meeting to study the issue of our facilities. We have a robust, we've had a robust building program going on in the district for several years, thanks to the community's support of bond measures that were passed in 2014 and And so here tonight, and as we're coming to the end of the available funds, we have projects in place that, quite frankly, are total more than we have resources currently available. And so one significant goal for this evening is for us to prioritize, the trustees prioritize those remaining projects, and to align with existing resources. So the agenda for this evening, or for this presentation, is to go through a little bit of history with the master planning process that arrived at the definition of the various projects across the district, a little bit of background on what has been completed, the successes to date, what we are currently involved in, and then take a look at the remaining bond funds and the projects that are in the queue, and then ask the board to begin a conversation, not sure that we're going to get there tonight, but a conversation to ultimately result in the prioritization of the project and moving forward with the funds that will be available to the district. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Robert to begin the presentation.
Okay, Tony, thank you for that introduction. We're going to start off with the master planning process, and Josh Savage is going to run through the first couple slides here.
So thank you, yeah, so I'd like to give a brief recap of the facility master plan process that we went through. The entire facility master plan is on our website, if you want to look at it in detail. So we started this process six years ago, I think it was January, February, about this time, 2013, where we started with a parent-staff committee meeting at each site, so we could, all the key stakeholders could provide information on what they wanted to see, what they wanted to see happen. At the same time, we, every site started a site committee, so we had three site committees, site committee meetings at each site. That's also when the facility committee was founded. And we started going to site, we did site visits through to other districts, we went to Bennett Valley to look at a couple of multipurpose rooms that they had built, we looked at some modular buildings that they had built over there, we took visits to American Canyon in El Cerrito, and also went to the Cove Square. At that same time, I did, with the architect, did site inspections at all the sites, so we looked at, we were looking for deferred maintenance, we were looking at all the building systems, HVAC, roofing, plumbing, electrical, we also looked for safety and security issues. Every site, we looked at classroom functionality, see how it worked out, like for example, Evergreen, as it was described through the process, the caves over at Evergreen, they're not really functional. Every site, historically, most of our sites only had two kindergarten buildings, and I think that was because in the past, there was only, kindergarten was only half-day, so they were able to have a morning and afternoon session. So, but now that it's all day, we, at a lot of our sites, there's four classrooms of kindergarten, but we only have two facilities available, so we looked at how we could add kindergarten buildings on sites, we looked at the furniture at the sites, and we were also looking for overall educational suitability and 21st century readiness. So then, everyone likes color-coded maps, so throughout the process, we, each site, we went through this process, so you can see that red stands for reconstruction, yellow's modernization, I don't know what kind of green that is, there's two greens, minor modernization and minor improvement, so we color-coded it, so we could see what our needs were. And at the same time, this other color-coded process was, so we could put a dollar amount to what it was going to cost to work at each site.
Can you, when you go back to the sites, just, you know, Tim doesn't have the visual of that, you could just add and say, there's so many buildings for modernization, and so many buildings to be added, so he can, he can hear that type of thing if you?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, please.
So for, so for this example, for Evergreen, one of the, one of the scenarios, options that we came up with was twenty of the classrooms were for reconstruction with natural daylight, skylights. One was major modernization, major modernization of the restrooms, major modernization of other classrooms, four kindergarten classrooms, it was just minor modernization. We wanted to modernize the office, major modernization, put an outdoor lunch shelter, and then a new multi-use building.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So then we came up with, or the architect had a cost model, so that we could, we could put a price to all of this. So this was back in 2014, and obviously, none of these prices hold true anymore. At that time, we were just coming out of the recession, so construction wasn't as hot as it is right now, so we were showing, you know, back then, we were showing major modernization reconstruction at $255 to $355 on the high side. Right now, we're seeing any modernization is $400, $500 per square foot. New construction, we're showing $400, $450 per square foot now, at the low end, it's $600, but we're looking, it's between $600 and $1,000 per square feet. So things have changed rapidly. So then we outlined the design contingency escalation, what escalation was going to be per year. At that time, we forecasted for two years at four percent per year. What we've seen hold true over the past four years is that it's actually at ten percent a year escalation. Then we put a ten percent change order in there, and soft costs at twenty percent. Also, you have overall bond contingency at ten percent, program management was at five percent, we see it more at eight to 10 percent, that would be like construction management, things of that nature, furniture, equipment, and moving expenses. So that was on the high side, so at that time, the architect had a high side and a low side. Again, they've changed it, now they don't do a high and low, because there is no low anymore, they only go with the high side, but this is what we were working at at that time. So you put all that all together, and we came up with, on a high side, if we fully implemented our master plan, the total bond program cost would be $392,725,467. On the low side, $280 million.
And so, at $280 million low side, and with bond funds of roughly, two bonds of eighty million, and minus the cost, roughly a ballpark of maybe 150 million, we're short 130 million to complete.
On the low side. Absolutely, yeah.
And that was you to do everything that was listed in the [inaudible].
Right, yeah, so I just, yeah, want people to understand that we've got this bucket of money, and we've got this bucket of things, and they don't match to do that. Okay.
So with that, I'm going to pass it over to CBO Americal, so you can talk about what we've accomplished through the bond program.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, so what we have here, the next couple slides, we put together just a list of all the projects that have been completed, it also lists some things that are currently still in process, or things that we still hold some money on. As you know, we have had two bond issuances, one in 2014, one in 2016. Accounting-wise, we track those separately, so that's why we're listing them separately in there. The column to the right does give the total project cost to date, this is as of January 31st, 2019, and broken down by elementary school projects, middle school projects, high school projects, district-wide, and other. And you can see, as of January 31st, 2019, we've spent $119 million on projects. There is a notation on there, because some of these are, projects are completed, but we haven't paid everything yet, and that's not included in these totals, as well as current projects, list the cost to date. And then, as you know, we do have some money from developer fees that we've used, and those are not included in here, because it's strictly the bond dollars that we're dealing with here. We'll address that developer piece on a future slide. So then next, we get into our current projects, and what we wanted to do here is just give an estimate of the total cost for those projects. The first thing we have is what we affectionately call the tag building over at Rancho Cattati High School, and it's broke down there by categories, we know the guaranteed maximum price will not exceed that. The other costs are basically what our estimates are on those, and those will change as we continue to work and finalize the project. So, so I'm saying, it could go higher, it could go lower.
I have a question.
It will change.
Why do we call it a GMP when it's not a GMP? That's only the contractor's piece.
The guaranteed maximum price is for the contractor to do the work.
Right, so when we're all handed these sheets that say, these are what our projects cost, this came to the, to us in January, and it came to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, these numbers are off by millions of dollars, because they don't include any of the soft costs. And that was, I have to tell you, that was never told to us. It was always told that it was a gross maximum price of 48, so I knew it was costing more, and this is the first time that anybody's been willing to say that it's actually costing $56 million and not the 48 we were told.
Having not made any of those meetings, I wasn't sure what information was discussed, or I do know that a lot of, there was a lot of talk on soft costs, I don't know what was discussed in those meetings. So, but we do know with the contractor, the guaranteed maximum price, it will not exceed that in the out. So the total for the tag building, we're looking at $56,268,000 for that contract.
I have a question too, wasn't the original, wasn't the GMP 40 million, so where does that?
It went out to bid for 40.
Yeah.
I have it from the screenshot on the website. It went out at 40 million.
So is that an architect's estimate of 40 million, and then it came back in at?
It's on the Cal Builders Exchange?
Right, but that's not, this 40 million's not coming from the Wright Construction, this is?
How we put it out to bid, I believe, right?
Right.
Yeah, so.
So if we were to put out, you know, I'm not trying to defend either way, but if we were to put out a bid today, the architect, and everything came in higher, what I'm suggesting is, is this was what the architect may have thought that this project was going to cost, and it came in 20% higher than that type of thing. So unfortunately, that's kind of the nature of the economy and construction right now to our detriment. I wish things weren't the other way, but, so that's probably what this was, Wright didn't probably put that forward. That's correct.
Yeah, and as we recognize, the farther we go down the process, the costs are going up.
Right.
Thank you.
So the remaining eight million roughly, between all the costs you say are estimates, are we 10% confident in that, or 20% confident that that it will be stayed? It's hard to, I guess, hard to say, but probably that, those estimates most likely will go up?
It's our best guess at this time.
Okay.
We don't have much wiggle room.
No, but, so what's the timeframe for these costs to be completed? So I mean, if it's a short timeframe, you'd probably be fairly close to that, if it's a longer timeframe, is we're going to be experiencing possibly increases?
Well, the project is slated to be done in, by the end of the year.
Three and a half weeks?
Yes.
Three and a half weeks.
And then, at that time, the cost, you know, will continue to get invoiced. And then, uh, at that time, the cost, you know, will continue to get invoices and, and went on in towards the project, but, uh, the clock start, kind of starts ticking before we have to actually pay, uh, particularly, uh, on the, um, contractors.
Right.
Uh, it is a lease, leaseback, so we do have lease payments going out, uh, on that, so it isn't like we're gonna have to pay the full eight million as soon as the project's done. That's gonna go out, uh, probably into the...
It's still liability, though. It's, it still comes out of our pot, of the...
Still gonna come out of the pot, but the timing of when that actually, we have, actually have to pay those dollars, and when we get all those invoices in, is still gonna take some time.
We have to commit dollars to that. We can't rob Peter to pay Paul and use some of that money for something else.
Part of what we're doing here is making sure that we're identifying, uh, what we still have to pay.
Sure.
And what we have available, and that's gonna help the board hopefully prioritize where we go from here.
Okay.
So, the next project that we have, oh, actually, we're, we're still on the, the Tag Building here. This is some information that was requested by the board, and, uh, basically, what we've done is we've come up with an estimate, an annual estimate, uh, to actually operate the, the cost of the Tag Building. So, we're coming up with a, a total of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of operational costs for that building.
And that doesn't include salary and benefits?
Correct.
So if you add the ninety thousand, we just added in for the media facilities director, two maintenance?
One cust- one custodian.
One custodian's gonna do seventy-two thousand square feet a day? Do you think, really?
No, that custodian isn't gonna, so, we'll, we'll redo the routes for the entire site, so that it's, yeah, one person, one person isn't gonna just...
So just one new hire?
One new hire.
So what's that gonna be, with benefits? About sixty, roughly?
It's probably in the ballpark, yeah.
So we're looking at three hundred K a year to, to run that building, in additional costs? Hundred and fifty here, and another hundred and fifty for, for two employees.
So for no long, are we no longer using the, the other gym? The locker rooms, the restrooms, all that kind of stuff?
I think the original plan was for that building to be demolished, but there, that's no longer the plan. They're gonna continue to utilize it, but on a less, lesser basis now.
We're, we're gonna close the locker rooms now?
So some of it will be offset?
Some of it will be offset, and of course, we're looking at this, uh, you know, we do have plans to rent out this facility to help offset some of these costs.
So we're looking at another about three hundred thousand a year in operating costs with two new employees, and the estimates we have here?
Yes.
So that's about, what, thirty grand a month, roughly?
Twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Do we have this in the budget? I know we have the media's facility.
We will.
Man...
Yeah, we, we have, the positions have, have been in the budget. Um, the, uh, operating costs here will be incorporated at second interim.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to the Technology High School conversion project. So, obviously, as, as, uh, we went back to the facility's master plan, this was not on the radar, as well as, uh, moving the students at Waldo over to, uh, Richard Crane.
John Murray.
Excuse me. And so this was actually, you know, a non-planned, uh, and a diversion from our, our initial plans that we had, and, uh, total for that current, uh, estimates for the technol- technology high conversion is nineteen point nine million dollars.
So that's ten million, fifty percent over what the estimate was.
What estimate was that?
We were told at a board meeting last, when it, when it first happened, when we were told they had to move, they had to relocate.
Okay.
It was about ten million. Even on this list, it says twelve. As of ten thirty-one, it says estimated twelve million. So it's eight to ten million over what was anticipated. So that eats into part of the other project issue.
Again, is that probably, uh, can, it, well, I remember when we went, two of you weren't on the board, but when they were talking about that, they were saying, this is going to cost approximately ten million dollars. And that was probably without architectural full plans and going to bid, and unfortunate, well, unfortunately, now, we've got almost a twenty million dollar cost, and maybe that's what it costs, but again, that goes into the pot of money, and, and then it's gonna be constraints on what we're gonna go forward with and what we can't do, so. Okay, can I go back, just for one question?
Sure.
On, on the Tag Building, um, I know we're gonna run it out, I think that's exciting, wanna be able to do it. Is there any, um, other similar facilities to give us a rough estimate of what we think we can pull in revenue out of this place? Uh, you know...
That's a good question.
Yeah. I mean, is this a fifty thousand thing, or is this a hundred thousand, do we think we can get...
So what we're, what, what I'm working on right now is, we use Facilitron for our youth facility.
Right.
And so, I reached out to Facilitron to ask them that, that exact question. Do you guys, i- in your vast, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? I mean, they, 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 yeah, experience, and also, the knowledge that they have of all the districts that they work with, are there any buildings like this? Uh, I actu- I even took them over there, took them on a tour, and they were blown away and said, absolutely not, there's nothing like this, um, 'cause we're trying to figure out how we can...
Okay, so, there's no comparison?
So, no, so they're working on, we're giving them the cost, the construction costs. It's a little difficult, 'cause, you know, you, you give them the construction costs, but there's nothing similar, 'cause, like, if it was just a gym, take the construction costs, they could do cost models, and figure out how long it would take to recoup your money. So, they're working on some scenarios to figure out how we can...
We just have to be cautious, because a lot of youth sports and a lot of other sports have limited budgets.
Right.
They came down to Morgan Hill, where my oldest one was, and they suggested rates for the, for the baseball fields, which bankrupt everybody, so they, they went, the school district obviously came way back down to what it was before. So, you know, those sports teams that you guys are representing out there aren't wealthy, so at the same time, it's a great facility.
Yeah, it's abso- it's a great facility, and also, I mean, keeping the other gym as well, we can...
Right.
Utilize that for...
Right.
Right, that, that, that's our plan, is, is to utilize the existing gym for the youth sports.
Okay.
And save the wear and tear on the, um, the new gym floor.
Okay.
The other piece too, if you look at Windsor High School, they, when they opened their theater and their media room, it was a hu- ginormous attraction for students to go there, and it's always in use. I have a lot of friends that work there, and they tell me that that, um, theater's in use all of the time, and, so. Another, you could also, um, check with, is it American Canyon that we went to compare the theater?
Correct, yeah.
So that's where we got a lot of our theater ideas from, was that one. I would check to see, you know, what kind of use they're getting as well, and what their fees are that they charge.
And, uh, uh, Napa, Napa Unified, uh, uses Facilitron as well, so...
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay, the next one on the list is the current project's estimated cost is Lawrence Jones' bathroom. Uh, that's more of a recent project, started working at four point five million on estimated total cost. Okay, so, I'm gonna have Josh kind of walk you through a little bit on, uh, the next is, we're gonna start talking about prioritizing the projects. He's just gonna give you a brief overview on each of the projects, um, that is listed here, so, uh, for some, it may be new news, others just a refresher on, on scope of the project.
All right, thank you. So, um, so the first one is Evergreen Elementary School, multipurpose room addition. Um, as you know, the, or, maybe not, the increment one was the office modernization. Um, and increment two was to build a new multipurpose room, ten thousand square foot multipurpose room with a, a classroom, a kitchen, um, a green room, bat, restrooms. Uh, rehab the existing multipurpose room into a computer lab slash library. Um, currently, they have the computer lab and library and two classrooms over in C-Wing. Um, and so that, that's, that was the, um, intention of that project. Also, new, new parking lots on either sides. Um, so that's the first one.
Josh, can you tell me, so, the size of that MU, didn't we find out too, that it wasn't the ac- the correct size that it needed to be, or the kitchen wasn't really supposed to be used because of the size of the kitchen?
Yeah, the kitchen is, uh, I don't think two people can fit in the kitchen. Um, it's, it's a tiny little room.
So now they'll be able to actually cook the food?
Yeah, they'd actually be at, they'd have, exactly, they'd be able to cook onsite.
And the room that they're adding on the side is gonna be a PE room?
Correct, yeah.
So high and low estimates, or high estimate for this, do we know yet?
Uh, we'll, we're gonna walk through the, the projects, and then we have some slides on the costs.
Okay.
And then also, so the, pretty much the same project is hap- is, was planned over at University Elementary, new multipurpose room. Again, can convert the old, the existing multipurpose room into a computer lab, library, um, except at that site, we would demolish the existing office over there and re-landscape that area. And over in A-Wing, about ten years ago, I guess it was now, um, we rented that facility out to SCO, Sonoma County Office of Education, so they turned A-Wing into offices. Um, part of, when they gave it back to us, they turned three classrooms ba- back into classrooms, um, but we were go- we wanted to convert the front part of the, the, of A-Wing back into, into offices, because the o- existing office right now is too small and cramped for, for what they need. Um, and then, the Mountain Shadows Educational Center, site improvements. Um, so what we would be doing is, we would be putting a new soccer field, synthetic turf, uh, all-weather track. Uh, we would be reorienting the baseball field and the softball field. Um, there would be a running track around the perimeter of this, of the, the campus. There would be a concession stand with a, uh, sort of like a team room, but also being able to be used for a classroom, for a PE, um, and site, uh, just landscaping improvements throughout the, throughout the campus. And then, also, which is, is on our radar is the, the Ranch Ca- Ranch Kentucky High School football field and track. That is, um, in the next couple of years, we need to replace the, the turf and replace the track. Um, it's, it's at the end of its life, lifespan.
And I believe the board approved last year a million dollars to be set aside, and now it's at two point three million?
Mm-hmm, that is correct.
So it doesn't have to go to DSA again? Is that why there's a two hundred thousand dollar architect?
We will have to go to DSA, correct.
Even if we're replacing like for like?
Because of the, because of the amount of, of the project.
Okay.
So, in addition to the, to the AstroTurf, what are we replacing on the track?
We would re- we would redo the track. It, again, that's, we, we, we put significant money into repairing, just from wear and tear over there, so that would, we would redo the track as well.
So, the surface for the track, is it removed and then completely replaced?
Correct.
Okay.
What would be the new life?
Ten years. Ten-year warranty.
Josh, how long, how much life have we gotten out of it?
We're at, uh, we're at ten, eleven years right now.
Okay.
So it's...
And we were real stingy in, in using that facility in the, in the first years, because we felt like, ah, we wanna make it last.
Yeah, I believe the first year, we didn't allow anyone to, to rent it. Um, so, yeah. Yeah, even with the fences up and all that, you still see people climbing, it gets used quite often.
That wasn't popular, but, you know, we would've had to spend the money sooner, so...
Okay, so now we get into the costs a little bit. We're gonna look at, uh, talk about the Evergreen Elementary School, the MU building addition. This is DSA-approved, we wanna make sure we're, so it's that far along in the process, and you can see the total estimated cost at twelve point five million. And we've o- of that, uh, on the soft costs, we have already spent four hundred and thirty-nine thousand on, on the fees, on, uh, a lot of it with architect and other software costs.
So on the October thirty-first project list, it was shown that this was ten point four million, it's now twelve point six, and it shows we spent four hundred and forty-nine thousand, but this says four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So it went down ten thousand somehow. On the one you gave us in October?
Okay.
I mean, sorry, in January, at the January board meeting.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm, I don't know, uh, this is what I'm looking at right now, the total, total current cost.
Okay.
That we spent to date. And again, these are the current estimates. It sounds like that four point, ten point four might've been only the, the GMP listed on that.
Robert?
Yes?
Yeah.
How, how can we know if the cost is gonna stay at twelve million, or, you, you know, I, I mean, isn't that gonna go up substantially? Is it gonna double, or...
Well, when you're, when you're dealing with a lot of the fees, I mean, it's, uh, they're kind of built, some of them are built into percentages and industry standards, and that's kind of what we're using to estimate the cost. Uh, architect fees are ten percent, and then some of the soft costs are five.
We're using five percent, yeah.
So we're using industry standards to kind of come up with that, and, uh, when, when the project actually gets moving in and done, then we'll know the actual cost on those. So there's a possibility, I mean, the longer we wait, the more likely those costs will go up.
And the longer it's taking for them to get approved at DSA, that's the problem. I mean, the Tag Building took forever to get approved from DSA and costs us millions and millions of dollars more, because it took so long. And that's what's happening with the other project as well, is they've gotten held up.
Well, these are both approved now, right? He, yeah, Evergreen and UEL's approved.
Yeah, the, the, these are, they're both approved, and, uh, Robert's correct, that that, uh, estimated guaranteed maximum price drives the other soft costs. So if that increases or decreases, those soft costs are going to move accordingly, and we should expect it to go up. Now this, uh, Robert, please, uh, let the trustees know how we've come up with this guaranteed maximum price, the, the estimated ones.
Estimated, so, when would it, when, when does it become set in concrete, when we...
When you approve a contract.
When you approve a contract.
Right. But, let the trustees know how, how those numbers were generated.
Yeah, so, um, when we, when we took, when we gave, when we submitted our set DSA, that's when we gave it to the contractors, Wright Contracting, and they, they put it out to contractors to, and, so we got initial pricing then. Um, they haven't gone back, now that we have DSA-approved plans. They don't wanna, you don't, I mean, you don't wanna ask your subs to keep giving you pricing if you're not gonna give them the work, so we're, they're now waiting until we, we give them the green light to, to go, before they, they get an, an actual GMP.
How long ago was that?
I'm sorry?
How long ago was that?
That was, uh, about six months ago, now, already.
I can't tell you what, what I've seen in my business in six months is scary.
Prices keep going up. I mean, a lot, there's a lot of factors that go into the pricing that, when, actually, it's been even more than that. I, I'm sorry, the time goes by so fast, 'cause this was in the summertime when they did it, so...
It's almost a year.
Almo- almost a year already. So, based on, based on the time of year, also, pricing can go, can be higher, 'cause everyone is so busy, you know, during the summertime, that's when all the work gets done, so maybe they can't handle any more work, um, so, there could be, I mean, you could...
Can it go up more than ten percent?
Yeah, 'cause this, this...
Can it though? I mean, really, because this would also be, this would be considered price gouging.
Well, they didn't, it's not a, a real bid until...
But it's construction.
Yeah, and it's not a real bid yet, until...
So when was DSA approval on both these projects?
The, DSA was approved in November. It was approved in November.
For both?
Yes.
So, um, how do you go out to get the contractor? How do you go out to bid for a contractor, then?
For the general contractor?
Yeah.
So, we did, uh, a while back, there was an RFQ for, for, to do a lease, leaseback. Um, so it was advertised, we went through the process, um, so the board approved the, the lease, leaseback contractor. I, I don't, I don't know when the date was, but...
Do they pick, so they pick the lowest bid?
There is no bid.
Not, there's no bidding with, uh, with, uh, lease, leaseback, so it's...
So you just give it to Wright Contracting?
It's, no, no, it's based off of the, no, we don't, yeah, you have to be pre-qualified.
There's a, quite a process.
You have to be pre-qualified to decide, they have a little point system, and, yeah.
Why, why don't we use like this, like a normal, 'cause I've done a lot of schoolwork, and, uh, usually you put it out to bid, and they take the lowest bid. They're all like, seems like all the jobs are like the same person.
There's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of delivery methods that are effective, um, that the board has chosen to use the lease, leaseback method, method for, methodology for these projects.
And the benefit to that is?
Well, the benefit is that if you have a contractor, that you have confidence in the quality of their work and their deli- ability to deliver, uh, that you can, um, utilize that contractor, rather than whoever is the low bid. Um, also, within the process, the architect and the contractor are working together, and so the architect designs something in a certain way, the, the, the contractor can look at that and say, you know what? That's really not a feasible way to build that, or I can build this in a way that's, that's a lot cheaper if you just think of it this way. And so there's a lot of collaboration that occurs, and under the traditional bid process, the, the design is made, the plans are created, DSA approves, and no contractor's even looking at it, except for, uh, folks that, that the architect may have in-house, that are, you know, that maybe have been a former contractor, um, or not, if they even do that at all, but, uh, good architects will at least do that. And so then the, the contractors look at that, and they provide a bid based on the actual plans, as opposed to what's truly biddable, and then... actual plans as opposed to what's truly biddable, and then oftentimes, you're involved in a series of change orders, and which will then escalate the cost. So, there's been quite a bit of research in California on lease-leaseback versus traditional bid, and lease-leaseback is, the initial cost of the contract is higher, but the, the overall projects do come in at the same cost or lower than bid, than the traditional bid process.
So, do we get to see the individual contracts from the subcontractors?
Um, well, they are, we have them, so I don't see why not.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've never been able to see who the subs were and what those, you actually sent me, Robert, all the costs, pages and pages and pages, per, per, per site of the, I mean, the first one I saw for one year, it's like sixty-seven pages, and I haven't looked at the other three yet. So, that does list everybody we've paid, and for what?
But does it show their original contract?
No.
On that, on that document, no.
So, we do have the option, let's say, this, for example, Evergreen was twelve-five, and all of a sudden, it came in at eighteen-five, we have the option of saying, no, we're not going forward.
Correct.
I mean, we have to, when we, we look at all our priorities type of thing, we're gonna have to, because of costs skyrocketing.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want, I, I just made that point, because I do want the trustees to understand, you know, that these are dated numbers, and they were not made on DSA-approved plans. So, these are our best estimates, the best figure that we have for these projects, and they're eight months old, and...
Hopefully, they're not like the Tech High that doubled, because we can't afford double.
Right. And, and we won't know until we actually ask someone either to bid on it...
Right.
Or to develop a guaranteed maximum price.
Okay.
So, because it's gotten DSA approval, it doesn't have to go to Wright?
Correct.
Is that correct? Is that a correct statement?
The, the board is our, I mean, the board has approved a contract with them.
Well, we can't approve the contract, there's no funds to fund it, so the house would be mechanism.
Yeah, but we have a, we have a guaran- we have a facility's lease and a site lease with, with Wright Contracting already for university and everything.
So, what happens if there's no funds to do the project?
Then you cannot do the project.
Yeah, then we don't, we don't do it.
Yeah.
And then, five years from now, you have the money, you can go hire someone else other than Wright? You would have to go back through the process again.
Five, yeah, correct, but five years from now, we would have to go back to DSA and resubmit.
They're only good for three years.
They're good for three years, correct.
Okay.
Tony, I have a, I know this is a terrible question, but is there, couldn't we assume that there's sort of a rule of thumb that if a project has DSA approval, the cost will go up potentially a lot less than if a project doesn't have DSA approval? And like Jennifer was saying, that a lot of costs come from that process, a lot of increased costs as, as the project goes on for certain length of time. Isn't that true, that without DSA approval, the cost could go up quite a bit more than with DSA approval?
Well, if I'm understanding the question, uh...
They do need DSA.
The, well, you have to have DSA approval.
No, I, I mean, yeah, I, I mean, if the project still does not have DSE, DSA approval, and it has to get that approval, that the cost could potentially go up quite a bit more than if a project has already gone through that process.
Correct. Complicated projects like the Tag Building are going to take DSA a long time. It's probably at least a year, if not longer, for a project of that magnitude to go through their process. So, there's, there's just that piece of it as well, but also what DSA, from the plans that are submitted to the plans that are finally approved, what types of changes has DSA required? If they are minimal, then, then, and you get timely approval, that's one thing, but if they ask you to do some significant redesign, structural, for example, and that could cost, if, that could add, you know, millions of dollars to a project, just on the structural redesign itself, the implications of the structural redesign, so...
Yeah.
Or they don't like the way that you've incorporated the sprinkler systems, for example, and you have to redesign that and do it in a way that's going to cost more money. There's all kinds of things, and then there's, you know, multiply those by, I don't know how many systems you're talking about in, in a building, but dozens and dozens of those. So, it really depends on how close to the original plans they emerge through the process in terms of the, the driving of the cost.
Right, but the Tech Middle project does not have DSA approval.
No.
The Fields project are, does not have DSA approval, correct?
So, potentially, that could go up quite a bit more than the estimate.
Does DSA have a price standard? I mean, what's the average? Do we know what that process costs?
For DSA?
Approval.
Well, I, I'm not sure, do, do you know what the, when, when we submitted, what the DSA bases their fees on?
I know what they base their fees off, I don't know the, I don't have the, like, the percentage of what it is, but yeah.
Is that included in the soft costs?
Correct, yes.
So, we could be looking at, what, three, four hundred thousand dollars for DSA approval? Is that unreasonable?
That's not, that's not unreasonable.
But I'm not just talking about the cost of DSA, I'm talking about as that process is extended over time, then the cost can go up for the project.
Absolutely. Any, any delay in, in, in projects in this climate are going to result in higher costs.
In tendency with the DSA, they're adding more that you, or at, having you do more
than what was originally, originally submitted. They usually don't say you don't have to do this.
No, they don't do that.
Right.
But sometimes you get lucky, and you've got a project that aligns pretty closely with how it was designed to what's approved. Sometimes you don't.
This estimated cost spent to date on UEL, I think that's an error.
Correct.
The hundred and thirty-two thousand?
What do you have?
Uh, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, five ninety-four.
That was for the...
That seems really low to have gone through all...
You're talking about the multipurpose room? Is that correct?
Yes.
On this slide, not on the, okay.
Uh, on the slide that is up on the screen, it says, I mean, it just would stand to reason, if Evergreen spent so far as four thirty-nine through DSA, how could UEL only be one thirty-two through DSA? It seems like there's a...
It would just depend, it just depends on what the architect does.
Maybe we have been billed yet for all of it?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, but the, there's more being approved, probably, isn't there more being approved at Evergreen? Did you have to put the, did we have to put the office through there too, or no?
We did, correct. But, but I think what, what you're, what you're, what you're referencing is...
Spent today.
Spent today is the hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Yeah.
I think that's what we know up to this point.
Okay.
And the architect might not have, I mean, they, sometimes billing takes a while, so we could've been billed more for Evergreen than we have been for UEL.
So, these two projects are through DSA approval, on the shelf as that was your term, and ready to go if we had the funds to do it.
Absolutely.
So, since we don't at the moment, um, well, that's gonna be determined, I guess. But the costs have probably gone up, which is gonna affect, which is why it's gonna be really difficult to prioritize projects, because these could've gone up by millions of dollars, we just don't know.
They, yeah, I mean, they could, they could've been...
This is from a year ago, you said, roughly.
And I could, you're gonna see at least a twenty percent increase, from what I've seen it from the industry, if not more.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mountain Shadows Educational Center, looking at sixteen point nine million on, on the estimated price for that project. That, it is submitted, ready to be submitted to DSA, so it hasn't gone through that process yet. And then, the Rancho Cottati High School football field and track replacement is, again, two point three million dollars on hand.
Now, I want to talk about the field here for a minute. When Joe and I met with you, Josh, in January, I had asked you about the twelve million on here for the field, and you said it was gonna be way more than that, and it's obviously seventeen million, it's quite a bit more. You also stated that we knew that we weren't gonna be able to do all these projects without a third bond, is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, we, we know that, we, I mean, the plan has always been that we were gonna pass three bonds, three, and...
Now, 'cause I brought that up, and I was told I was a liar, that there never was a third bond. So, I'm just kind of curious as to...
No, I think what it was, is you said it was gonna be in two thousand eighteen, and we can't do a third bond until the nineteen ninety bond is off of our...
No, I was told unequivocally that we were gonna have enough money to do these projects, but it's clear that we don't. I just wanted to be clear about that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the addition of the Tech High, that was the plan, and the fields changed it.
This, this field, how did we go from twelve to seventeen? How did we get a five million dollar increase in, since October thirty-first of two thousand eighteen?
So, that's just based off of, again, you start out with an estimated cost of what you think the project is gonna be, and then as you go through the process of, of going with the facilities committee and, and designing the actual project, then architect draws it, and then that's where you get the pricing from.
So, I'm running a tab, and I'm up to eighty million, so let's keep going, from, you know, for the project.
So, we wanna, also, there's a few other things we need to make sure that we're including, and we prioritize, and that's deferred maintenance. There was a time when the state was providing deferred maintenance dollars to us, and had a match from what the district was contributing. That's no longer the case, and so, any deferred maintenance projects that we're talking about, would either need to come from the general fund or from other sources, such as the bond fund, which is a legitimate source for that. So, we just list a couple of the things that are on our list for deferred maintenance. Now, the other thing, too, is the district-wide technology replacement licensing. I think, you, you had brought, brought this up in a, in a meeting about how our technology is gonna start aging out, and we need to start replacing it, and that's very true. So, we will put, put some items down here, Chromebooks, middle school iPads one-to-one, the LJ Computer Lab, radios, network licensing, we're gonna be coming off of a five-year agreement, and, and we're gonna need to renew that, and then hardware support cost, so we're looking at an estimated cost of about one point seven million dollars for, for those, for that item.
Is that network licensing through DJI? Do you know, Josh?
Might've been through Cisco.
Yeah, it's through Cisco.
Well, Cisco's the switch, but it's DJI provided the switches.
The original, I'm trying to think, the original, the original agreement, I believe, was the DJI.
Oh, it's a combination of those two, Cisco, DJI.
Well, DJI is the company that installed the Cisco brand switches.
Correct.
And some of those were pulled out and replaced with those other, the Numis, I can't even pronounce what they are, those servers on the racks in the back row.
I don't, yeah, the Nimble, Nimble Storage, is that what?
Yeah, they've got a, no, it's got a different name than that, and I can't remember what it is, I apologize. But I do see that you've got one point seven million in to replace, 'cause you're gonna have to replace not just these items, but the iPads, the Chromebooks, all of that kind of material as well.
Correct.
What's the timeframe on the, the IT replacement, technology replacements?
Uh, we're actually looking at that through, coming up, summer of two thousand twenty, so then about another year, where we're gonna be, particularly on the, the network licensing agreement's gonna be going off.
So, just shy of two million in a year and a half?
Yes.
Okay. And then, average, do we know deferred maintenance? You saying one percent of, do we, of the budget, what that number is?
Well, no, the, I would not, that was the, what we needed to match prior to that, so deferred maintenance and routine repair maintenance are different, so you think you're talking about three percent. Routine repair maintenance is part of our general fund budget. Deferred maintenance is not. Deferred maintenance are, are larger projects in nature, they're not the routine maintenance that we need to be doing on a daily basis.
And you've got half a million for that, roughly?
Uh, actually, I think if, if I recall, I think I had some of that in current and in future.
Yes.
So, I think we're looking at about seven.
There's two, and, okay, so those two together.
Yes. Trying to break it down into what was more immediate, and then, obviously, having some money set aside for the future on that.
And the funds from that can either be developer fees or bond, or general fund, correct?
For deferred maintenance?
Or, or possibly the state, if the state ever kicks money back to us.
Uh, I would say the deferred maintenance, it would not be from developer fees.
Okay. So, just bond, general fund, or if the state starts giving us money back? Or is that just for new buildings?
The state's bond money would be different, that would be for modernization.
Okay.
So, when we're talking about deferred maintenance, we're really down to the general fund.
And bond?
Yes.
Okay.
And for those that don't have a bond, it's general fund.
So, the roofs at Monta Vista, Rancho, Hawn, and Evergreen, are the, when you talk about deferred maintenance, are you just talking about repairing or replacing, or in some cases, both?
Exactly, in some cases, both. Over at, like, at Monta Vista, we have, we, we have an opportunity to rehab some, a lot of the roofs, so that we're, instead of thirty to thirty-five dollars per square foot, we're paying six, seven dollars a square foot. So, we, any, any chance that we can rehab a roof, we will, and then get, also get a new fifteen-year warranty out of it. But yeah, it's, it's, it's all of the above.
I got pictures today that LJ Library was leaking. Is that another, I don't see it on the roof list, but is that another one that needs to be looked at?
So, with roof leaks, a lot of times, it's not even the roof that's leaking. There's, so, you know, we have, even, even when I was a kid, I used to get up on roofs all the time, I don't know what, why you like to get up on roofs, but, you know, kids get up on roofs, they kick over vents, they climb up on ducting, so a lot of times, when it's said to be a roof leak, we, we get out there, and it's a vent that's been kicked over, or ducting that's been damaged.
So, what's the typical life of a roof on a portable classroom?
Uh, fifteen to twenty years.
And do we know where all ours are sitting? At, for...
They're all, they're all, at Monta Vista, especially, they're all over, they're all over.
So, but, most of our sites need roof replacements?
Well, as we've gone through this process, every site that we've, we've, we've worked on, we, we've done the whole, instead of piecemealing, we've done the whole project, so Thomas Page, Richard Crane, John Reed, Waldo, which is gonna be Tech High, all those roofs are, will be brand new.
Except for the ones that are listed here.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then also, like, at Rancho, last year, we spent, the past two years, we spent close to a million dollars rehabbing most of the roofs over there. There's tar and gravel roofs that we're, we're gonna leave until they fail, but, yeah.
What's the life of a portable classroom?
Twenty years.
And are all ours at that, at these particular places, at the same, okay?
Okay, so, I'll put together some numbers here, these are our estimates at this time, after we've paid everything to date through January thirty-first, we have about twenty-four million dollars of cash on hand. We're still expecting another two million from Sonoma State as part of the move of Tech High, and then, we're estimating the two thousand and sixteen Series D in early spring two thousand and twenty, and that's at eighteen point four million dollars after the cost of issuance. I think a conservative, conservative estimate on our interest revenue, another two hundred thousand, and developer fees about five point three million on that.
These developer fees go out how far?
How far? Basically, we have about four point three million dollars in the bank, so to speak, and so, just an estimate of about another a million dollars on that, probably over the next year. I mean, it is just that an estimate on those.
But this is taking us out through two thousand and twenty?
For the developer fees, more likely into two thousand and twenty, yes.
Okay, 'cause the one that we got at the last board meeting was from seven-one to seventeen through six-thirty-eighteen, and it shows three point three million, with five hundred thousand of that going out, half a million of that to the Tag Building.
Yeah, that's what we had basically on hand at that time.
But if all those numbers hold true, that's about forty-nine million?
Uh, fifty, yeah, just a little, a tick above fifty. You're, you're, you have good math there, Tom.
So, if we have, we don't really have fifty million dollars, because we don't have the eighteen million, we're not gonna have that till spring of two thousand and twenty. So, if you take that out, if you take out the bond, excuse me, the developer fees that we don't have cash on hand, three point seven-five million going to estimated outstanding uh, three point seven five million going to estimated outstanding payments, again, that's probably gonna rise, and twenty-six million needed for projects. If you take out.
No, ongoing.
Ongoing projects, yeah, the Tag.
That's money minus current projects, you're going twenty-seven million, then you take out the eighteen, and another million that we don't have from developers, that gives us eighteen million left. Or wait, didn't I do that right? No, no, it only gives us eight million left. And then we'll pick up the other eighteen million later on in, in next year, which gives you twenty-six, and I have projects of sixty to do. So, you know, I think we know that, it's just.
So the balance available of nineteen million, if you exclude the eighteen million that we don't have, the bonds, Series D till next year, we only have one point two million, which leaves you, like, no wiggle room if something goes wrong, or up, in any of these projects, the three remaining projects, basically.
It, it will be tight, and as I said earlier, part of that, when we're talking about the outstanding, the ongoing and current projects, it isn't like we're gonna have to pay all that right up front, it's gonna be paid out over time. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to watch it close and monitor our cash as we move through this, uh, and that's, you know, just something we're gonna have to do.
So there's no reason this evening to reprioritize any of the remaining projects, 'cause we don't have the money. And in a year, it could be a totally different picture. I mean, why would you prioritize tonight for money you're not getting till spring of twenty twenty?
There's an argument for that. I think ideally we would want to come up and, and, and look at what we have. The purpose of tonight was really just to give us an, an update on where we're at at this point. Uh, what are, what are obligations, what are we expecting, what projects do we have on the hopper?
Well, the really concerning issue for me is that these are estimates, we, of the ongoing projects. I don't see the Lawrence Jones project going too much moreover. I'm concerned about the Tag Building being able to finish that, uh, and also the move to the Waldo site. 'Cause that is just, pretty much just got started in the last six or eight weeks, the demo and whatnot. So with one point two cash on hand, I mean, even if all of it's not due out today, it's gonna be due at some point.
Right.
And so, and then you add, take into account, we need some money set aside for technology replacement in the next year. It doesn't leave much to, I mean, basically, you're either gonna not do one of the three projects, or you're gonna do all three and scale them back to nothing. I mean, that's where we're sitting, there's not enough, on here, we need forty-six million dollars, and we, this says we have nineteen, but we really have, like, a million dollars after all the next three projects are, that are ongoing.
Fourteen, six, if those costs remain constant.
Correct, if they go up.
Yeah.
Right, and, um, Josh and Robert, I wanna, um, go back to the DSA approval process. You know, I know that Tag Building took a lot longer period of time than other projects. Is there any way for you to kind of ballpark the estimate of time for DSA approval for the Fields project?
For the Field project?
That's sort of a wild card there.
Well, I mean, the, the Tag Building was, it was, it was, I mean, I think it took us two years to get approval. Um, it got, it got sent to San Diego, Los Angeles.
But there are hundreds of Tag Buildings built throughout this.
Yeah, how long, how long did Evergreen take?
But, but the typical process usually is about four to six months for approval.
Okay. So you don't expect the Fields project to double in cost, like, the conversion process?
No, and because, because it's Field, you know, 'cause what DSA is looking for is fire, life, safety, um, structural, you know, things like that. With the Fields project, it's mostly, it's the Fields, right? Um, so there's a concession stand with a classroom, um, so.
And that's now at seventeen?
Correct, correct, I think that's.
It's just under, it's nineteen point nine, just under twenty.
We're, we're, you're talking about the Fields, right?
The Fields.
The Field.
Oh, you're talking about?
The Field.
I thought the Fields was that.
No, the tech, no, no, the Technology Middle School Education Center.
That's here.
Yeah, which, that's.
So if the DSA process takes about four months, given that it's not as complicated as Tag, possibly it could go up to twenty million, but you wouldn't expect it to go up to twenty-five million, right?
No, we wouldn't.
Okay, thanks.
Are there items on the field that we could take a look at and reduce the cost on? 'Cause I know there's a lot of changes we were making to the Fields.
There, yeah, I mean, it would, whatever the board would like to do, as far as, I mean, we could, you could scope sections of it, you could do it in increments, um, I mean, I.
If we do that, then wouldn't we have to get DSA approval on every single, if we chopped it up?
Well, what you would.
Wouldn't that be a different project?
What we, what we've, what we typically do, 'cause we, a lot of the projects, we, we do in increments. Um, so you, you put, you can put the whole project in, I mean, 'cause it's already been, it's, it's ready to be, it's ready to be submitted. So if we decided, like, if the board decided that they wanted to only do parts of it, um, and then we went back and did other parts, it would be, it would be advisable, because it's already ready, we, we're gonna have to pay the fees on it already to submit the whole project. And then, once we got a GMP, and we could, the board could decide what, what sections of the project, or what parts of the project.
Would that entail increased cost by the architects to split it up into stages?
No doubt.
No, because, no, 'cause the whole project would be approved, and then we could just say that we wanna do, we wanna, we wanna increment it.
So you're saying there would be no additional soft cost if we split it up into stages?
I mean, like, we'd have to get a permit for each project, we couldn't just have, like, whatever.
We would get the, we would get the permit for the entire project, and then you could.
Don't, permit, permissions don't last, like, three years or whatever.
Correct, that's correct.
So if you didn't complain, complete the components in three years, you have to start over on those other.
You would have to.
We have to go through DSA and the whole.
And whatever, whatever code changes there might have been, um, correct, you'd have to renew the process.
You definitely would be in a different code cycle.
Yeah, right.
I mean, as it stands, the plan for, uh, that project, there's no funds to do it, it's gotta be scaled back. 'Cause otherwise, you're spending all of your remaining bond money, and you're leaving nothing for computer, um, replacement technology, and nothing for deferred maintenance. And then you're back to nothing in, left in the bond fund.
And if we defer the, um, replacing the track at the high school, how much maintenance are we spending? Like, every year, about how much are we spending in maintenance?
Off the top of my head, I don't wanna, I, I believe that we've spent close to about twenty thousand dollars just recently on the track itself. Um.
Is there, is there a liability issue, uh, a length of time for that field, for kids' soccer, lacrosse, and football? If they're playing on an outdated field?
Correct, yeah.
Just as I'm sure the Tech High people want to be on fields that don't have road cinema, et cetera. I understand that. But if we, as we have a school district, we don't replace that, then are we liable for?
We would be liable if, if it gets to an unsafe condition, um, kids getting hurt, um, the GMAC ratings and all that. Um, we would be liable, absolutely.
Josh, if, if we split up the Fields project into phases, and we have the money to complete, say, just hypothetically, Phase One.
You gotta do this.
But then we realize we don't have the money to complete the successive phases, are we tied into that through the contract?
Maybe for maintenance, too.
Can we say we can only go ahead with the first phase?
Correct, we can, we can decide how much we wanna do with, with the contract.
How long would it take you to come up with a phased-in process for us? Do you have to talk to the architects?
Well, we have the plans, we have the plans ready to be submitted to DSA.
But how, how long would it take you to split it up into phases?
Uh, we could, I mean, six to eight weeks, we could probably run some scenarios.
So if you, so, as it stands, if there's gonna be nineteen million dollars, and that's based on estimated developer fees, you mean, could go down, could go up, we don't know. You're talking, we need about two million dollars for technology. We need two point three million for the replacing the field at Rancho. We're at four point three, and then we have another seven hundred thousand in deferred maintenance, we're at five million. So of the nineteen million, we're actually down to fourteen.
Then you have three major projects, do you scale all three back into a third of each, or do we do one of the three?
It would be difficult to scale back the multipurpose rooms.
Okay, I mean, so.
Which have already gone through DSA approval.
Which happened, which are DSA.
So we're gonna spend more money to put something else through DSA approval that we may not have the money to do.
Well, that, that's, I mean, that's why we'd like to get direction, 'cause we're, it's ready to be, it's ready to be submitted, but we don't wanna submit it yet until we're, we're ready. Um, but yes, you can't, the multipurpose rooms, you can't really scale back.
And those are twenty, that's twenty-four million and change for just those two.
No one's brought this up, but I will, and the taxpayers can scream at me, another bond. Uh, if, you know, if the community pays for it, it's expensive now with, for three bonds and a parcel tax. I'm just saying, what, what are alternatives are, so.
Well, what about the mo, have we heard anything more on the matching bond dollars for this pass?
Uh, we, we're not in the, in the pipeline for any of the dollars. So we're starting that process now, uh, to get, to get in, but as, as we had discussed, the, the dollars that are available at the state level are for the backlog of applications that have been there for many years.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, it'd be a matter of getting, getting everything done and getting in line.
And when is the soonest if we wanted to do another bond, when's the soonest we could do that, what year, you know?
Um, I, Tony, do you?
I didn't hear the question.
If we were to go for another bond, what is the soonest we could do that?
We couldn't do it this year.
No, we can't do it for several years, it's, I believe it's not till the nineteen ninety bond comes off of our taxes.
Yeah, honestly, I haven't asked that question of our financial advisor, I've only spoke to him, you know, about Series D. About, when did you think?
I think around twenty twenty-five, does that sound right?
I think it's twenty twenty-six is when the nineteen ninety bond goes off.
So we need to keep some of this bond fund remaining to take care of the stuff we're, we know we're gonna have to do. We know we have to do the Rancho field, we know we have to make sure our technology stays up to date. I mean, we didn't spend twelve to fifteen million dollars to let it all fall apart.
So at Evergreen, how many students are there, approximately?
Almost five hundred.
Evergreen's an excess of five hundred, five to ten.
And how many are university elementary?
One eighty-eight.
That's Richard Crane.
No, that's.
It's about that, it's just under two hundred.
UEL's two oh.
Two oh.
Something.
Two ten.
Something, yeah.
Okay.
It's four hundred between the two schools.
Richard Crane, right down.
So the impact is greater for the field, not doing the Fields impacting more students than a MU at University?
Evergreen needs an MU, that building is so old, falling apart, but it's twelve and a half million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And the Field pro, even if you wanted to do the Field project here, we don't have seventeen million dollars, even after all is said and done, it would have to be scaled, considerably scaled back.
What happened to the one million dollar MUs that we did in nineteen ninety? Times have changed, huh?
Rancho Gattari High School was built for a million dollars back in the day.
Times have changed.
Yeah. Dollars are a little different. Partial to do with the fires that we've had everywhere, right in the Cossop.
And living here is expensive for everybody.
As we know, uh, I mean, again, the facilities master plan, when we started the discussion this evening, identified other projects, we just wanna, uh, remind them of that, obviously, they're not on the radar, but those were identified at that time, uh, Margarine Han, Elementary, Montevista, and then the other items that were identified in there. Uh, and then we also have, uh, you know, we're already talking a little bit about the technology, but, uh, we, we also know that other things are gonna start cycling out as we go along. Uh, teachers, teacher laptops, about a seven-year cycle, looking at twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Teacher iPads, five-year cycle, also twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Replacement of the flat panels, same year. Network, uh, for replacement of that, twenty-five, twenty-six. And computer labs, twenty-six, twenty-seven, those are estimates on, uh, the life of, um, that hardware. Uh, so, future funding for projects, uh, we're, we're, you know, as, as has been pointed out, we're gonna be heavily dependent on getting that Series D to even move forward on, on what we have prioritized. Uh, developer fees, uh, we are fortunate that we do have the building going on in our community. And, uh, I came from the district, that wasn't the case, and we were getting about twelve thousand dollars in developer fees. So we're fortunate to have that as a resource.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we've already discussed a little bit about, uh, future bond sales and when, and I think we'll get a little bit more firm answer for you guys on that. And, um, that leads us to the end of the presentation.
I have a question about developer fees. I wasn't involved in the signing or any of that, I've read them, the agreements. And I just have a question, 'cause I don't know the answer. If, if enrollment continues declining at the rate it's done for the last three to four years here, and all across the state, what happens with the developer fees when we're charging them fees based on capacity that we need to have more space for more kids, so therefore pay the developer fees? How do we justify to them, can they come back and ask for money back? If those students don't materialize?
I don't believe they can, but, um, I mean, part of what you're doing when you come up with the developer fees is, there's a study that's done, that you, a justification study on, on that you're showing that you have the legitimate reasons to, to have those fees. Um, I don't believe that they could come back and collect those if we don't get the enrollment or we don't have that increase down the road.
'Cause I read that feasibility study and the justification, and it, it calls for about almost fifteen hundred more students than we currently have. That was my concern, and that was the contract that was signed. So I just thought, boy, if I was a developer and found out I was paying all this money to open new schools, et cetera, but the students weren't there, I would be asking the question.
Yeah, I'm not so sure the developers look at it that way, I think that they're looking at it as just part of the cost of their projects. Uh, and it's, every community has developer fees and pays those as part of any building projects.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I just have a statement, I think that we need to sit down and go through, and with Kevin, our architect, and look at the buildings that we have on our plate, as well as the Fields, and see, you know, down the line, what we are going to do. 'Cause we do need to do something with the Fields here for all of our kids to be able to, A, have PE and have it safe, and have Tech High and Tech Middle School be able to do sports. 'Cause right now, they haven't been able to use the soccer field, that's why they're over at Richard Crane, and the baseball fields are in horrible condition as well. So we do need to come up with a plan.
Well, I'm gonna go out on a limb here, I think we should go ahead with DSA approval for the Fields and get that going, because the longer we delay, the higher the costs are gonna go.
And the cost, do we know the, the cost of DSA?
Yeah, but, max three hundred. I can get, I can get that number for you.
Okay, because, I mean, we're forced to do some things. I mean, we can let technology go, but that affects curriculum and achievement. Um, I'm concerned about liability on any field, but we currently have soccer, lacrosse, football, and track going on at the Ranch and in other facilities, I think Tech High goes over and uses that, too. So we have to make sure that that's safe. So, you know, we have to incur those costs, I think, and, and we're limited with that. And then, I mean, if we can afford this, you know, once you tell us, you know, what that is, I think we can bring it back and put it on an agenda and vote on it, type of thing. There's a discussion tonight, I don't think we've really called for any action items tonight.
No.
Right, so, we can't make any action items tonight, but we can come back and, on when it's agendaized and, and, and to do that, so.
And, and the soft costs that we have programmed into, into the estimated costs.
Right.
Would take in, do take into account DSA fees. So within that, you know, industry standard is, for soft costs, is twenty percent. Um, and where most projects were, like, at the Tag Building, we're, we'll be at, like, thirteen percent. Uh, most projects were projecting about fifteen percent. So within that, within those soft costs, the, the DSA fees are covered. But I can get, once we're ready to, to submit a project to DSA, I have to create what's called a project tracking number, um, and then our architect will fill out the forms necessary, and based off of those, the, the, based off of those forms, there's, there's a fee model that they'll give us, and we'll have to, so then we'll know what the actual cost is to, to submit the project to DSA.
So everything goes well, costs don't go skyrocketing. We will get money for remaining portion of the bond when in twenty twenty?
Spring, it says.
Well, no, that's when it goes to issue, when, when, when do you think they would sell, and I have money in my hand? 'Cause the last thing I wanna do is.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll know for sure exactly in August, when the, uh, tax. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll know for sure exactly in August when the tax rates, excuse me, the tax rules are finalized, that the county produces that on an annual basis to know what our various properties, the valuation rates for our various properties within the district. So that's when we'll know.
So it's based upon the, the valuation staying where it is and going up. So we're seeing a slight drop off in housing costs. Not, not a huge significant, but a little bit coming down from where it was going. So hopefully that rate stays up.
Correct.
I mean, we have a lot more houses too being built.
Right, so it expands the base, which is good.
So you're going to find out about the DSA cost, and can you find out about the GMP? Because you said it's probably gone up on this same project.
I mean, you can't really do the GMP until next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it won't, they can't build it until twenty twenty if you do a GMP now.
You can keep getting estimates, but they're not going to be good until you're ready to, to put a shovel in the ground.
Right.
So how do you decide what needs to be done if you don't know what it's going to cost?
We can get, we can get an estimate. I mean, a contractor is not going to want to put too much effort into a project if they know it's not going to, if it's not going to go anywhere. We can, we can, cost of that, we can get estimates.
But even their pricing usually is only good for thirty days.
Right, correct.
So like all this, all the materials and stuff that were procured, they, they go out, put out for cost, and it's usually only good for thirty days.
That's correct.
It's like I know, like when steel and the tariffs went up, we had projects that we knew were going to happen like a year later. And we did bulk buys on steel stuff. And that's knowing that those costs are going to happen.
Right.
Right. So, you know, the price could just go up in thirty days a lot.
Absolutely, depending on the time of year that you bid it up, you know, there's a lot of variables.
And the best you can do is, is get a, a price in today's estimate. Look back at the, at the market increase over the last, you know, twelve, eighteen, two year, eighteen months, two years, and do an escalation based on, on that pattern. But then again, you know, something unforeseen happens. The terrorists, for example, are a perfect example of something that was not anybody's radar. The wildfire, again. So you can, you can look at the history to inform the future and build an escalation model, but it's only as good as the, the, the future rolls out the way you predicted it would.
And God forbid we have a huge earthquake. Tear up everything.
Yeah. So I, I hear the unease of, of making decisions based on so many unknowns. And, and that's, that's the complexity. We, it's easy to make these plans when, when you know you have eighty million dollars in the bank and this is your first project. When you're starting to get towards the end of your resources, that's when this becomes complicated. And you want to, you don't want to end up impacting the general fund.
And this is, this is nothing new. The nineteen ninety bond had a plan too. And some things weren't completed, you know, the gym at the high school. And so a lot of people were angry about that, saying, you promised me this. Like, I can't promise the future because I can't guarantee the cost type of thing. So it's frustrating from, from that standpoint, not being able to deliver a master plan. You know, and the original master plan, what, the high was what, four hundred million?
It was close to four hundred, correct?
Yeah, so it's nice to have a master plan, but at the same time, if you overmaster plan, people look over the four hundred million and go, look, I wanted all this type of thing. So I think it's really clear when you ever do a master plan to say, this is going to change. And this is a guideline to get us there, and we'll try to get as close as we can. And don't hold me hostage for that, so.
One of the things that is upsetting to me is that there wasn't some forelooking about eighteen months ago that we weren't going to be able to do all these projects with the bond funds that were available. And yet we kept spending bond money for DSA approval. So we spent about a million dollars in getting the MUs approved that could have gone towards the Fields, that could have gone towards something else. And now we've spent half a million at one place and four hundred thousand at another, and there's no money to do the projects. Now, how silly is that?
Yeah, there's variables that change though as well.
We should have done one thing at a time instead of this, you know, full speed ahead. And now we've spent money and we're not going to have anything out of it. And that's upsetting to me. It's a million dollars. It's a lot of money.
A million dollars is a million, yeah, it's a million dollars.
But you also don't, when you're, going back eighteen months and you look at it, you had no idea what the costs were going to go up so exorbitantly. So you want to get as many projects in and approved as soon as you can so you can get going on it for the kids.
Well, if you had looked at the, not you, you, but you speaking as a group, the list that we were getting of what the costs were were completely inaccurate. Because all that they included was right contracting's cost. It didn't include another twelve percent for soft costs. If that had been included from the get-go when I got involved in mid twenty sixteen, you could have seen that there was not enough money to do all these projects. But because, and I kept pushing to get the information, nope, that's the gross maximum price. Well, yeah, for the contractor, but not for all the other things that needed to get done. If that had been done, and I really promised I wasn't going to go back and say, but I think that we could have saved a million dollars or more, now we've got projects approved sitting on a shelf that can't be done. And that's a million dollars.
Unless, unless we do, you know, a bond. That's the only way that I see those projects to get.
And Jennifer says we can't do one for five years, six years. It's not going to help us.
And then you're, then we got to go back to DSA because the permits will be, so we, well, we did lose a million dollars.
And then what do you do about deferred maintenance with leaking roofs? And we've got to save some of this bond money to get us through the next six years. We have to. We can't spend all nineteen million dollars. I mean, we'll have classrooms leaking on kids, computers breaking and no money to replace them. So we've got to just be really prudent with what we have left.
Okay, any other questions? If not.
Well, I have a comment.
Okay.
And I want to thank Josh and Robert for all the hard work they put into getting these reports in to us. And I want to thank Krista for her determined effort to make sure that we have all this information. And I think it makes all the difference in making the right decisions. So thank you all.
If not, any other, we will adjourn the meeting.